Okay, we'll get started. Welcome everyone to our first meeting of the new year, January the 15th, 2013, Pikeville Independent School Board Meeting. We're going to open up with a prayer and our superintendent, Mr. Green's going to give that to us.
Thank you. As such, you join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you so much for this opportunity, Lord, to be with you, to be with each other, and we thank you so much for the school system, the school district. Father, tonight especially, thank you for Dr. Myers and Mrs. Combs, Lord, as they begin a new term, and we just thank you so much for their service to our community and the other board members, Lord, tonight, and I just thank you for not only the students and the staff, but, Father, we just ask your wisdom in the decisions that are made here. We ask that the focus always be on those students, and, Lord, we just thank you for the way that you've blessed our community and the way you continue blessing them. And we ask all these things in your precious Son's name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And we're going to open up with some student and staff recognition. I think we have the Allstate course here with us. And Ms. Barbara Kelly. We're going to have some music tonight.
Um, we as a district have, will have seven, actually seven this year, representing Pikeville at Allstate. We are going to have, we have two from the elementary. They have Ms. Mara McCoy, Ms. Brittany Hopkins, and then for junior high, we have Savannah Little, Brittany Thacker, and Starr Manning, who is doing volleyball tonight. She called us, she was like, "Oh, the game." So that's really important. And then I don't have my two high schoolers here. One is sick and one didn't have her ride. But that would be Abby O'Staley and Jared Otten. So altogether, that will be seven representing Pikeville at Allstate in February. So we are now going to sing the first verse.
(Singing) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free And the home of the brave?
We've got special presentations there. And also for you. In most clubs or civic organizations, they hand out a mug or, whether it's Rotary or Kiwanis. Well, here, we hand out tumblers, and I'd like to give Ms. Cardy an opportunity for a plug on our alumni tumblers.[264.33][264.33](Laughter). The Alumni Association sells these for just a small fee of what Ms. Cardy?
Um, the tumblers are fifteen, and the, we also have mugs, and they're $12.50.
Okay, free commercial there.
And you can get, you can get all this stuff.[283.33][283.33](Laughter). I have to do this, I won't spill it in the car.
So we just want to say congratulations on making Allstate, and just as a token of our appreciation, our board chair, Dr. Myers, will be passing out these tumblers to everyone.
They're microwaveable and dishwasherable.[306.12][306.12](Laughter).
Um, as we go to Allstate, I just, I thought of something, and that just really speaks highly of our, of our district, and it's so funny because occasionally you'll get emails from disgruntled, other disgruntled educators, shall I say, and I got one of those about travel costs, and it was like, "Well, please share with us how much." And I was like, it said, "We have to pay so much for fuel." And I was like, "Oh, I don't think I'll answer that email because everybody will hate me in the whole district because you are so kind to us and so generous to us, to help us with so many things, and you're so good to the music department." And I just, it has been a blessing and a pleasure this year to get to work with even more of our students. So thank you so much for allowing us that opportunity because I know it does cost money, and we do appreciate administrative support and the support from the board and support from you. So thank you so much, board members, for everything that you do as well for us.
Thank you. Congratulations for getting elected. Thank you. Now, yes, before we move on, and we've got several things, and we've got a special guest over here. I was referring to him as Superman is cape over here earlier, but we'll get to that portion in just a second. But before some of our guests leave, we'd be remiss if we didn't share that this month or the month of January is Board Member Appreciation Month. And of course, tonight, we have in the audience former board member, Mr. Mike McCoy, and just want to say welcome tonight to Mr. McCoy and thank him for his service. But in the month of January, across the Commonwealth of Kentucky, board members are recognized for their service. Well, of course, it's, it's not difficult to understand why we have a high-performing school district when you look at the character and the leadership of our board members. And we're so blessed and fortunate to have them, and it's not just me saying this because they're my five bosses here. And of course, we don't have Mr. Greg Tackett with us tonight, who couldn't be here, but something I will share is this: continuously, they make decisions time and time again for what's best for each of you, and that's the students. And we need to be so thankful and feel so blessed, especially in this day and age of leadership, not only across the Commonwealth, but the nation. So we're certainly thankful for them, and they do this for the total salary of zero sum. They won't even accept the $75 reimbursement. They will never share that with you or tell you that, but I will. So it just, it's a small token of our appreciation tonight. It's not an automobile or anything, but we do have pies of all things, so we have a pie, and we'd ask at this time for our students to present those to our board members tonight in appreciation of your service. So just want to say thank you on behalf of the district.[512.83][512.83](Applause).
I'm just so grateful that it's not a pie in the face.[520.54][520.54](Laughter).
Thank you for what you do.
I thought we were having dessert.
Did we give to anybody else?
And it just happens that we have our auditor here tonight. (Laughter). But that's not today.
Now, we'll continue. I'd like to introduce Honorable Judge Larry Thompson, a family court judge. He's going to help us minister our oath to two of our board members. Ms. Combs will be first.
You, Teresa Combs, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute, to the best of your ability, the office of board member of the Pikeville Independent School Board according to law. And do you further solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you, being a citizen of this state, have not fallen duels with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God?
I promise.
And there is also a second oath as a board member that you must take. Do you, Teresa Combs, being first and least sworn, state that you are eligible under the law to serve as a member of the Pikeville Independent School Board, and that you will not, while serving as a member of such Board, become interested directly or indirectly in any contract with or claim against the Board, that you will not in any way influence the hiring or the appointment of district employees, except for the hiring of the superintendent of schools or the school board attorney?
(Inaudible).
I'm hoping that's good.[660.12][660.12](Laughter).
Thank you.
Congratulations. And I need you to sign a document, and then we'll get Dr. Myers up if we're going to be formal here tonight. I just need you to remember that right there. If you wouldn't, I'll turn that over to Mr. Thompson. And this is just actually given to you.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Raise your right hand, and place the left on the Bible. Do you, Mark Myers, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute, to the best of your ability, the office of board member of the Pikeville Independent School Board according to law? And do you further solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you, being a citizen of this state, have not fallen duels with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisting any person thus offending, so help you God? In addition, do you, Mark Myers, being first and least sworn, state that you are eligible under the law to serve as a member of the Pikeville Independent School Board, and that you will not, while serving as a member of such Board, become interested directly or indirectly in any contract with or claim against the Board, and that you will not in any way influence the hiring or the appointment of district employees, except the hiring of the superintendent of schools or school board attorney? I need your signature here, too, if you would please. Thank you. You're very welcome.
No, no.
I'm glad that's in it, but you know, people still call.
And this actually just goes to you. (Inaudible). I'll let you get back to business.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
We need to move on to the board elections and appointments. I have a motion on the floor to elect a chair for the Pikeville Independent School Board. Is there a motion for an election of a chair?
Dr. Myers, I'm free.
Mr. Bader makes a motion. Have a second?
I'll second.
Don't speak up too fast. All those in favor? Any opposed? I will receive that election.
Congratulations or condole.[862.12][862.12](Laughter).
Okay, as board chair, then we'll have an election of the vice chair. I need a motion on the floor for the vice chair.
Mr. Tackett.
Mr. Greg Tackett?
Absence.
In his absence. Have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Cardy second that. We have a motion there. Mr. Tackett as vice chair. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So moves Mr. Tackett as vice chairman. And the floor will be open for a motion for a secretary. A motion for that on the floor.
Mr. Green.
Mr. Green. Mr. Bader makes a motion. Have Mr. Green have a second. Ms. Combs second that. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So moves Secretary Mr. Green, board superintendent. Now, we need to set the time, meeting date, and time of our board meetings each month. It's usually the third Tuesday of the month at 6:30. If that's in accordance with everyone, we'll keep it at that time and date. If not, we'll make a motion for a new date and time. Have any objections to that same time, same date? So we'll make the third Tuesday of the month at 6:30 PM. Make a motion today? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So moved on the time and date. All right, now we'll move down to, we have more staff recognition.
Tonight, we're fortunate enough to have several students here from the Student Council. Ms. Huffman, would you like to introduce our guests to them?
Well, I think I'll let them introduce themselves. We'll start back here. Guys, would you care to stand up and tell them your name?
Brady Nolte. Like Nolte.
Right up here. Just go ahead and stand in, please.
Kayla Bush.
Kayla Bennett.
Renee Patel.
Matt Alton.
Tom Staley.
Wendy Smith.
Welcome, we're glad to have you guys.
I will move down to the elementary school principal's report. Mr. Thompson.
Ms. Kelly left. I wanted her to share, I don't know the exact numbers, but I think she probably told you the same thing last year when the Allstate course was announced. I think there's, when they get their sheets listing the students, there's area code and the phone number, and I think ninety-some-odd percent every year is 859 and 270 area code. And I think this year, we may have been the only ones, if not just a few more children in the 606 area code, that made the Allstate course. So that's an honor, and it's, it's that way almost every year. And I think I can also speak for Mr. Rose. She does a phenomenal job with course. She does a really, really good job. She has about sixty to sixty-five kids in the, on Mondays after school at the elementary school in a course program, so she's doing a real good job. I want to speak for Mr. Rose, since I always get the opportunity to speak first. I do want to say we are blessed in this district to have board members like you folks. That's a sincere compliment. You are always seeking to put children first, and that's not just a statement. I think that's something you live by, and we truly appreciate that in this district. And I think I speak for the entire district and the students when I say that. Have a couple of quick announcements. I'm not going to take much of your time tonight, but I did want to say, I know last month we discussed safety issues. We now have at the elementary school, it's actually been installed today, our buzzer system for entry, and a camera will be placed at the front door. It's going to be finished tomorrow, and Ms. Karen, Ms. Taryn, or myself can see who's at the front door, the only door that's unlocked, and buzz someone in when they come to the school. Also, tomorrow, there will be installed the panic buttons that will be ready to call the 911 and give them an emergency. So all that's coming within the next 24 hours, if not already finished. They were working when I left this evening. We, I'm really proud to announce, we had an academic meet at school on Saturday. We had eleven, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Belcher, you correct me, I think there were eleven elementary schools in Pike County, St. Francis, and Pikeville Elementary. I think for a total of thirteen, there may have been fourteen, but anyway, school's there, and we had the competition. And I want to give you some results. It's called Super Saturday. It's done every year. In the written assessment in Arts and Humanities, we had two students who tied for first place. Evan Kelly, that's Ms. Kelly's son, and Sarah Belcher, that's Mary Belcher's daughter. I'll say that.[1131.41][1131.41](Laughter). And Johnny, they tied for first place in Arts and Humanities. That's in the entire, you know, yes. We had in the area of Social Studies, out of all these schools, I think this is wonderful, we had a fifth-place finisher, Jason Lynn. We had a third-place finisher, Luke Cheney, and we also had the champion, the first-place finisher in Social Studies, and that was Jordan Rat. So we took first place Arts and Humanities and also first place in Social Studies. In Language Arts, we had Tyler Varney, who finished second place overall. In Math, we had a third-place finisher, Mr. Caden Cottle, and we had the first-place finisher in Math, Jason Lynn. We also played three quick recall matches, and the scores of those matches were as follows. In round one, we played Southside. The score was Pikeville 24, Southside 10. In round two, we played John's Creek. Score was Pikeville 23, John's Creek 9. And in round three, we played GF Johnson. Score was Pikeville 26, GF Johnson 14. So we had a very successful academic meet. I want to thank Ms. Brewer, Ms. Fields, and all the folks who helped in that. We, I want to invite you, every Saturday, we talked about this today at the Filming Principal's Forum, every Saturday now through March, little league basketball's going on at the Blue Goose from about 9:00 AM to somewhere around 4:00 PM. We have about sixteen girls and boys teams, and they're participating on Saturdays, they're practicing through the week and playing every Saturday. So if you get a chance, come by for those games. That's really all I have. Is there any questions?
Congratulations to those students. That's wonderful.
Yeah, I want them to be recognized next month, so, yeah, that was great. I was, I was really proud of them.
I just love to give away these medals.[1265.12][1265.12](Laughter).
Thank you, guys. We really appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Now, we'll move to the high school principal, Mr. Rowe.
Can you time him? He made me cut on my notes.
First of all, I want to echo the same thing that Mr. Jones said. I want to thank each and every one of you as board members for what you do for our kids and for our school. I've had a chance to work with a couple of different districts, and I can tell you, I've never met a board like this. I want to say thank you, and you're a vital part that will make this Pikeville a success. So thank you for that. Some dates I want to share with you. We have some testing that's coming up. We have an AP Language mock exam that's on January the 16th. We have an AP Literature mock exam on January the 22nd. Part of our partnership with Advanced Kentucky is we give mock AP exams. That way, our students can get a feel for what a true AP exam is and give them more success for that. So those are two of the dates for some of the classes, and I can share more later. We have ASVAB testing for 11th grade, that's going to be on January the 23rd, and for 12th grade on February the 20th. We also have ACT for the juniors, which is part of our accountability. That is set up for Tuesday, March the 5th. So some dates and some tests that are coming up, and we know that state testing is soon around the corner, and we're doing everything we can to, I guess, roll sleeves and get as much content covered as possible to make sure our students are ready for the exam and let them be successful. We had a lockdown drill. We had that on Thursday, January the 10th. I want to say kudos to Chief Reed and the city police. They came in during our lockdown, did a sweep of the building to make sure we're following procedures like we're supposed to. I can't imagine working with a better group. They can arrive within two to three minutes on our campus. They're constantly in our building now. They're walking the halls. They're actually going to be coming into our building when the students are not there to start conducting drills for different scenarios. So I feel very safe that our city police are involved as they are, and I want to say kudos again to them for everything they do for us. A couple of accomplishments for our football team. Kudos to Coach Magneme. He was named the Courier-Journal Class A Football Coach of the Year. So it's a big accomplishment, Coach Mac. He's a great guy, he deserves it. We have some students who made the Courier-Journal Honorable Mention Allstate. Those include Gage Morrison, Austin Black, and Caleb Campboy. These guys did a really good job, and I'm proud, and also, I'm sorry, Cody Eastep also, for everything they've done. They did a great job for this year. And the last thing I have to say is, I want to give a shout-out to one of our alums, Ms. Jessica Casebolt. This past year, she has represented the state of Kentucky and our school district very well, and we're very proud of her. Have I got any questions?
Mr. Rowe? And we'll move over to the district supervisors, if you have anything you'd like to talk to the board.
I guess, first, I'd just like to thank you all for the opportunity to be able to serve as instructional supervisor. This month, I have, having the opportunity to work with the elementary with their intervention testing as part of their RTI, Response to Intervention, that we'll be working with, and just learning a lot about the position and enjoying being here, so, thank you.
Just a couple items that we'll try to highlight. Not to be greedy.[1460.12][1460.12](Laughter). Mr. Rowe took care of several of the testing items that are coming up close for us. Sixty-four instructional days until K-Prep. That's hard to believe that this much of the year has already passed. Thirty-two days now until the ACT test that Mr. Rowe mentioned, and so our year has passed by once again quickly. Mr. Rowe did a good job of mentioning the test there. He mentioned the AP mock exams. That's something that all the AP classes are trying to work in this year. Had done that last year in the science, math areas, and the language arts. And Social Studies is not part of Advanced Kentucky, but they've had their own preparation, and they're kind of trying to get in line with mock exams as well this year. Met with the high school this week, and Ms. Stewart and Ms. Rowe are finalizing the schedule for testing that will occur at the end of the year. In the sixth week out is when some of the testing will actually start. And so, you know, our schools are under quite a bit of testing focus even as long as six weeks back. And so that, that will start six weeks back for us. On the instructional supervisors end, we're trying to better ourselves also with SBDM training. We'll be able to now do our own training, and so that's something that will be done for Miss Adams, a new member of the SBDM at the high school. KYOTE is Kentucky Online Testing System. It's an alternative to the COMPASS test, and Ms. Stewart brings that thought to us from her prior experience as giving seniors an option to use the KYOTE test for benchmarking if they aren't having trouble with COMPASS. And so that's something we'll be trying to add new this year. Flexible PD for our teachers is something that we're trying to get a plan for for next year in the sense that one of the complaints and one of the things that we always, our teachers are wanting is more specific PD to their content areas. And so we're looking at some other districts that's been doing that for a while and trying to make a plan that we can, can do a good job of that maybe first year out. But that would be the highlights, unless you guys can do.
Thank you, Mr. Belcher. And we'll move down to the action consent items. See them there, A through F. Need to take any of those out to discuss later. We will. If not, I'll have a motion to approve all the action consent items that's presented here. Have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Combs makes a motion. Have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Cardy makes a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So moved on to consent items. All right. And we'll move down to the action discussion items. 2011, 2012 audit report, we have with us here White and Associates today from Richmond, Kentucky.
Didn't I pick a beautiful day to come from Richmond?[1631.12][1631.12](Laughter). Actually, I was in Prestonsburg. I have a friend there that was actually working. So I've been there all day today. So I looked down, and I said, "My gosh," it's raining, and he kept saying, I said, "Morgan County back, you got to watch because there's a little bit of bad weather coming there." So we've had such a mild winter, so it seems like every time there is bad weather, I'm on the road somewhere. But I pre-
for this Adams, a new member of the SBDM at the high school. KYOTE is Kentucky Online Testing System. It's an alternative to the COMPASS test. And Ms. Stewart brings that thought to us from her prior experience as giving seniors an option to use the KYOTE test for benchmarking if they aren't having trouble with COMPASS. And so, that's something we'll be trying to add new this year. Flexible PD for our teachers is something that we're trying to get a plan for, for next year, in the sense that one of the complaints and one of the things that we always, our teachers are wanting is more specific PD to their content areas. And so, we're looking at some other districts that's been doing that for a while and trying to make a plan that we can, can do a good job of that maybe first year out. But that would be the highlights, unless you guys can do.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Milton. And we'll move down to the action consent items. See them there, A through F. Need to take any of those out to discuss later. We will. If not, I'll have a motion to approve all the action consent items that's presented here. You have a motion?
I make that motion.
Ms. Collins makes a motion. Have a second.
I'll second.
Ms. Cardy makes a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So, moving on to consent items. And we'll move down to the action discussion items. Two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve audit report. We have with us here White and Associates today from Richmond, Kentucky.
Didn't I pick a beautiful day to come in Richmond? Actually, I was in Prestonsburg. I have a friend there that was actually working. So, I've been there all day today. So, I looked down, and I said, my gosh, it's raining. And he kept saying, I said, Morgan County back. You got to watch, because there's a little bit of bad weather coming there. So, we've had such a mild winter. So, it seems like every time there is bad weather, I'm on the road somewhere. But I appreciate, I'm going to go ahead and let you hand this out. I'm going to tell you a little bit about who I am. We kind of arrived at auditing the school district at an unusual circumstance, and you all were gracious enough, we already had our schedule set up, and you all were gracious enough to ask us to audit your district. But I had one stipulation, I had to have a little bit of extra time, because I already had committed to the other schools that I do. And I do a lot of school districts. Actually, I had fourteen, and then with your all's addition, actually I had fifteen school districts. Probably wondering why I do, I do so many school districts. Actually, I've been in, since nineteen ninety-three, I had a firm in Richmond. I actually grew up in Powell. Everybody knows where Powell is, because if you go to Lexington, you got to go right through it. And my father was superintendent for twenty-some years, pre-Cara. So, I, all through school, always, my father was superintendent. And my mother also worked in the school system. Obviously, that was pre-Cara too. She was school food service director. And I worked for the Department of Education out of school, out of college. Got my license, decided I wanted to have my own destiny, so I started my own firm. My wife currently is a principal at, in Madison County. So, no matter where I turn, I know schools are always bouncing off the wall. So, I know pretty much from the instructional side. So, every night I get in, I get preached to. And so, I know, and like the principals here talk, that's one of the toughest jobs that you can have. And I know she's a workaholic. And I wished I worked one half, the amount of times she actually puts forward, so. Does anyone get a tape this way? She says I never brag on her. But anyway, I, I'm not a, I'm probably different than, I, I have no idea if I'm doing something wrong, standing wrong, you just let me know. But how your all's processed in the past, I know you had a certain auditor for quite a few years. But I'm not really a guy that gets you an audit report, so you start flipping through the pages. I'm not that type of guy. Some of the students are here, if you want to be CPA, the accounting profession's an excellent profession to get in. I got quality people that works for me. I have no trouble getting audit work. It's competitive getting businesses and business clients and tax, but in the auditing realm. But I try to specialize in a niche area of school districts, so I know everything about it. We do a lot of audits, we do a lot of training. I have people that go all over the place that do school activity training and stuff. So, that gives you just a little bit of background of our firm. But we do appreciate, now, one thing I will point out, I'm not totally out of Eastern Kentucky. I actually audited Floyd County, and that's how I knew Denise. She was actually a young lady there. And at the time, I think four of those young ladies, when I was auditing there, actually are finance officers now. And so, they have, have a good finance officer, and they trained them well. And also, currently auditing Letcher County, I've audited McGoffin, pretty close to, I've audited Harlan, Berethick, some of those counties, I've audited a bunch of them. So, Southeastern Kentucky, Central Kentucky is kind of where, but I hesitate not to come to Eastern Kentucky. I enjoy coming up here. I'm really impressed with your office, impressed with the people here. And I'll tell you right up front, you've got a good, the superintendent talks positive. I actually come in, and first year, I'm not real, real, real strict on anything that I find. He is, he actually sat there and he talked to me, so you got a good guy there to explain your side of the, of the finances. Denise does an excellent job too. So, I'm very impressed in your administrative staff. Everybody was very kind to our staff. Only thing I looked at them, I said, what's the nickname of the school? And they said, I don't know, I have no idea. And I said, that guy? I said, right there it is on the back of the hearth. I never, none of them knew, so, answers I told them. But anyway, we, we do appreciate you all allowing us to audit, so I won't belabor that point. I gave you this, these same pages that I give all school districts. I usually go to the board, and I have a reason for doing it. I do something different every year. One reason I did it this year, I had a couple of superintendents actually asked me and said, what are you actually auditing? What, the reason is, in the paper, Adam Edelen actually went into a local school district, and of course, had some problems there, and you all probably well informed about that. So, I thought, well, I'm going to tell all the boards actually what we do, and do it really, really quick. What we do, we do actually a risk-based approach to auditing. There's a risk, there's, there's a high risk in the school, and which is where we tailor our audit program to, to check. Obviously, the highest risk, if you, if you don't know already, is school activity accounts. The reason is, it's decentralized. You don't maintain it here at the district office. They deal with a lot of cash. If you all know your bookkeepers, and I know they know well, they're actually the responsible parties, but the bookkeepers actually do an excellent job here. But they get their boxes together, they get all that information for us to audit, and they really work really hard to do that, and all my districts do. But actuality, I'm really not concerned what's in that box. My main concern is what didn't get in there, unrecorded revenue. So, actually, we do certain tests. We actually go to the district, district schools. We actually look and see what they're doing in real time. We want to know if they really keep up with it and actually doing it. So, we really put a lot of emphasis on the school activity counts, because they are the highest risk in the school district. Now, getting into the district office, which basically Adam Edelen is discussing in one of the school districts, as far as the risk in the district office, the, the district's not, I'm not really concerned about the unrecorded revenue. Pretty much, anything runs through the Department of Education budget. Ninety-five percent of it, I'm going to confirm. So, I'm not really worried about the money. I can see the money. If it's not there, I'll find it, that it's not, not recorded. The, the risk in a school district is actually the payroll, fraudulent employees, fraudulent vendors, and also credit cards and travel reimbursements. That's the areas that are highest risk in a school district. And in audit, we actually take a sample. We don't look at every single transaction, obviously. But pretty much, what we check, we pretty well get a good, a good idea of what, so we look at all those things. We find anything that's unusual, something that comes to our attention, we have a reporting responsibility. If it's at a certain level, below the superintendent, we'll go to him. If it's at the superintendent level, we'll obviously go with governance. If there's a problem with abuse, fraud, any kind of irregularity, we go directly to the board. So, we would have notified you if there was a problem. So, there was none here, but we are checking, and I usually like to go through that with the boards, because all the superintendents were, is there anything out there that might be embarrassing if they happen to pick my school district? So, we are looking, and nothing came to our attention, so excellent job here. The next page that I got for you to look at, actually, the reason I did that, I just, instead of flipping through the audit report, I actually just showed the audit report and just broke it down in different areas. Auditing is basically all I do is, it's, it's not as simple as I'm going to say it, but what we do is make sure that your financial statements aren't materially misstated. That's basically what we do. If they are, if I have to make adjustments or I have to do certain things to it, there might be an internal control problem, or there's deficiency in the design or something that I might, I'm, I'm looking at too. And I have standards that I have to do to check. Basically, I have three reports in the audit report. Independent Audit Report at the very beginning. It basically says that your financial statements are not materially misstated. We call it an unqualified report, which is the highest report you can get, and that's what you receive. The second report's kind of in the back, and it's down at the bottom. It's Government Auditing Standards. Basically, they're standards of the government. We actually check compliance requirements and internal controls of the district. If we find anything that might be significant, where an employee performing their duties might not be able to detect or possibly detect a material misstatement, if it's significant enough, we report it to the board. You did have one. It was significant. It wasn't material, but it's significant enough to actually report to the board. And you'll see it stated there in the back of the report, and actually you got a corrective action plan. It's basically real simple, and it's commonplace where, because the common law rules, the coaches should be on the payroll system, so the account's payable as a vendor, so they qualify as an employee. So, that's just movement of how they're, those individuals are paid. But it's significant enough to actually put into audit, and corrective action plans, where they'll move that to the payroll, so no big deal, and I'm sure that'll be corrected. The third report is single audit standards. And basically, it says, if you have over five hundred thousand dollars' worth of federal expenditures, we have to test certain compliance requirements and internal controls protecting those compliance requirements on certain federal programs. And your all's instance, it was, we have ways of picking the programs, but you had a Title I cluster and a special education cluster. All those programs fall within those two programs. We actually check those compliance requirements, any internal controls, and if you find anything that's significant, we'll report it to the board. We didn't find anything, so you had an unqualified report, so absolutely no finding within that. So, the only other thing that you'll see in there is a management letter, and I, you're probably used to that in past audits. Management letter actually shouldn't be in the audit report. It actually should just go to management, not even supposed to go to the level of governance as the Board of Education. Actually, or immaterial instances of noncompliance or suggestions for improvements in internal control. The only thing in the management letter dealt with the schools. The reason it has to be in the audit report is Department of Education says, well, if you don't put it in there, we have to make a phone call to him, and he's going to have to send it to us separately, so why not just put it in there? But what happens, it has the same effect as a deficiency within the independent audit. So, actually, it's not the same thing, but it bears the same weight. So, obviously, when you have certain little management letter points at schools, depends on where you're at, but a lot of schools really don't want their name within that management letter. But they still are at a lower level, but they still have to be in the Independent Audit Report simply because Department of Education's requirement to do so. So, I won't go through all those, but they're immaterial. But one thing about a school, school activity accounts, everything depends on two people in a transaction. Usually, if you look at those, you'll kind of see that. And the reason for that is, if two people are not involved, and they put in, they deposit a hundred dollars, it could have been a two-hundred, three-hundred, a thousand. Two people have to be involved in every transaction to make sure that all that money was recorded, again, the unrecorded. So, I always ask one question when I get the, the staff gives me all these finances, and I say, is there anything that would give you or lead you to, to think that there is anything from a fraudulent standpoint going on in that school that I have to mention to the board? And they didn't see that. So, I think it's just minor stuff, and so, obviously, they will have corrective action too, and you don't want to have repeats. Usually, my rule is, we have three repeats at a school, it goes into the, into the audit report, simply because the designate usually is a principal, then it would, if it repeats after the second, with the third year, I would shift the designate to be at the central office level. So, I know that's a little, probably a little more information that you have, but excellent audit report by the letter. And last thing, last page, observation. I'll try to speed up. One thing, this is beyond my scope. Anything I tell here, but I think, since I do so many schools, everybody, it's, it's amazing how different school districts are. You all educate the students. That's basically your business. Your private sector business, that's what you're doing, it's kind of like a charter school or something. I mean, you're actually educating the children. Finance is a, is a support, you know, the, you just don't go out and raise your own money. It's actually government. But one thing that I've noticed, revenue is, is a problem now with school districts. What I'm seeing overall, and this is not specific here, I say the same thing to everybody, has about forty-four, four percent increase. It's unpopular. A lot of districts won't do that. And you're starting to see, like health insurance benefits, that the state used to pay, that wasn't paid by the district, now, point five last year, now it's one percent, next year's one and a half, next year's two percent. It's going to be coming out of the general fund. They're not cutting your seat, but what they're doing, they're going around the back door and cutting it. Federal programs back in the mid two thousand, like two thousand five, two thousand six, started making you take the matching costs out of the federal program and pay for it there. You say, well, it's in the federal, it's not a big deal. But what happens? It shrinks the federal budget, and what happens, especially Title I, especially, shifts that burden over to the general fund. One thing that I try to tell boards is that there's a shift in environment now in school district. It's moving toward where finance can no longer have an influx of revenue and, and operate. And I always like to give an example. I have a school district, and this is actually a true story. Had the district, had a new superintendent come in and said, I want to move the school district up very quickly in the state test scores. And what I'm going to do, I want to move the teacher, pupil teacher ratio twenty to one. I'm going to get new principals, leadership. You believe, if you don't have good leaders, you can't. So, we, five out of six of the schools, you change the principals. He gave us, the teacher didn't have a raise for five or six years, he gave them a raise. He gave them the tools to succeed. That's what he believed. And as he was going through that, he turned over and looked and said, oh, by the way, looked at the finance officer, said, I want to increase my fund balance in the general fund one million dollars. Of course, her mouth just fell open and said, you can't do that. That's impossible. The finance officer actually is not there anymore, because he wouldn't tolerate that kind of thinking, but entrepreneurial thinking is needed. He actually increased his fund balance, not a million, but a hundred thousand, actually did that. There are ways, and, and I don't like to use the word, but actually, it's sufficiently funded, schools are sufficiently funded. There's a movement from inefficiency to efficiency, and it's possible. And there are people out there that actually have the expertise to give that to, to all school districts, you need it or not, it's out there. And actually, I was developing a program where I'm actually doing that training, districts that are suffering on their, you know, they'd be in the low-income area, they're losing attendance, they already have four or five facilities, there are two hundred, hundred and fifty students in it, and over operations, you know, you can get in severe problems in some areas. So, you all don't have exactly those areas, but just to caution you, things are moving to that. People have to be more entrepreneurial thinking and thinking ahead, because things are not going to get any easier, they're going to get harder. So, I always say, run it like a family business. You, you're not going to squander your family business money. If you run it like a family business, you'll be successful. So, I think just the mentality is changing. So, it is possible to continue to, to expand with the funds that you've got and actually grow fund balance, actually do a lot of things with it, it's possible. And there's lots of ways of doing it, and some would probably surprise you so. But anyway, that's beyond my scope. That's just stuff I hear and, and things I've talked about, and I do appreciate it, the opportunity. My firm obviously appreciates that. We enjoyed coming up here. Wonderful central office. You got one of the best that we go to. They don't shove us in a closet in some places, even though Floyd County did one time, actually they shoved us in a closet. But we enjoyed coming down here. Very nice, the people were to us, and we, we hope we tried to do, not too cumbersome, but tried to do a thorough job and do the best we can. Do you have any same question, any specific question that you went through the audit, maybe have something that you might want to ask you don't understand?
Perhaps you could go to the Congress and talk to them about running like a family business.
Well, that's, that's true. I read about that and hear it every night, it's when I sit down for dinner, but, you know, it's, it's a long time, but eventually, I mean, if you got, you got the task force now that the governor has here, and so, you know, we'll watch and see, but I can't see increasing for the next three years at least, because the bias is up, and they're not going to do anything now because of the election. So, from a state standpoint, but federal will be slowing, obviously, federal will slow in those funds, so it's, it's, but it's not bleak. It's still not, it's still possible, and, and so, there are areas. So, if you ever get in that position of what are we going to do, just ask the right people, and they can help you. But excellent school district. I was very impressed with it. I enjoyed coming up here, and in the future, if I could help, don't hesitate to contact us. Appreciate it very much. Thanks, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you. What are your thoughts on the audit report? Thank you, Mr. White. Again, you, you mentioned the state auditor, and of course, several school districts are getting highly scrutinized, and we want to be high-performing not in, only in academics, but in every aspect, whether it's the extracurriculars or for our students, whether it's any extracurricular, athletics, the Arts and Humanities. If, if we're participating, we want to win, we want to be competitive, we want to be the best. And hopefully, we have those expectations for every area, including finance. And on, on page three, one of the comments there, or, I'm sorry, regarding the finance officer is doing more with less and growing pressure to and, um, growing pressure to be entrepreneurially minded. Well, each year, we're continually trying to do more with less, continue to have a high-performing school district, and, uh, the finances are getting more difficult, so there's even more pressure on our school district to make certain that we're good stewards of the taxpayers' money, so that's our ultimate goal.
I guess we'll need a motion for the audit reports for the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve school year. Have a motion to recommend, a motion? For the second?
Second.
Ms. Carty, second. All those in favor say aye? All opposed? So moved on the approval of the two thousand eleven, twelve school audit. Move down to the draft budget, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, Mr. Green?
Um, just as Mr. White was discussing, we're in, we don't have to spend a great deal of time on this because, uh, the Department of Education has not afforded a final seat forecast at this point for this school year. So we don't, we're required by law to approve a draft budget, but we have no additional information, so. Uh, of course, uh, as that, uh, the draft budget be approved, it is currently as close as you can possibly calculate it based on the numbers that we currently have. Um, and again, certainly, uh, we hope there are no further reductions, however, as we'll discuss, uh, under, uh, other business side, have to discuss, uh, assessments, so, uh, there probably going to be additional cost, and as there always are, uh, unanticipated costs, but, uh, with the draft budget tonight, it's basically a formality that we must approve.
So we need a motion to approve the two thousand thirteen, fourteen draft budget. Mr. Beater makes a motion, and second? Just called second, all those in favor say aye? Opposed? So moved on the two thousand thirteen, fourteen draft budget as presented. And move down to other business?
Under other business, you'll see some, uh, attachments, and now it is one being, uh, uh, facility request, uh, with AAU basketball. And this is a facility request, uh, by Mr. Charles Todd Harris, uh, with a fifth-grade AAU team. He does have, uh, the required insurance and million-dollar coverage for the facilities. Basically, use, uh, gymnasiums, uh, basketball teams, however, have showed him how limited we are, and, uh, that of course, the facilities will not be available for Wednesdays, uh, after six, and also on Sundays, so. Have that along with, uh, KD, or KEDC membership, a request for, uh, uh, cooperative. And this, uh, membership is in agreement with a cooperative where the fees have been waived, uh, for us through the end of, uh, June, so basically, we get a, uh, uh, an opportunity to participate within the cooperative and their services until the, uh, end of June. However, we do need board approval to participate, so. Those two, that's, that's fine, yeah. It, it would have to go to configuring, so that's, that's fine. It's, it's in a two-page agreement, and I have the hard copy here, I can pass around to board members if they saw it. So just need approval for those two additional hires, please.
So we need a board approval for the facility request for the fifth-grade AAU basketball and the KEDC agreement. Have a motion to approve those requests? Ms. Carty, have a second?
Second.
Mr. Beater, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? So moved on the requests. Okay, now to the information review items, the personnel report.
I believe we have. I'm sure the rain's not helping the wireless connection either, so. Uh, we have one, uh, uh, new hire as recently as this afternoon, uh, to make, and invited her to, uh, the upcoming, uh, board meeting. Uh, Mr. Rolfe, you'd like to give an introduction of our new junior high math teacher?
Yes, Ms. Ashley Freiter, graduate of Allen Central High School and a graduate of Alice Lloyd College, been her student teacher at Allen Central High School. She was valedictorian of her class at Alice Lloyd and the leadership board, also of their Alice Lloyd. Had a great interview, and, uh, she's going to bring a lot of energy and excitement to the classroom, so we're excited to have her aboard.
She isn't here.
No, she's not here. She starts tomorrow, she was approximately still the owner of the classroom.
Uh, Mr. Rolfe just consulted, uh, this afternoon, uh, with the site-based council, so, uh, to say it's hot off the press, uh, with, the ink's barely dry there, uh, for that, uh, there's the personnel report, of course, one new hire listed.
Ashley Freiter.
Whose place did she take?
It'd be Ms. Melch's place.
She's still there. And move down to Ms. Salinas, any Ms. Salinas brought for the board, Mr. Green?
Uh, yes, something I do need to share with you, and it's, uh, uh, been publicized today in the newspapers a- around the state. Um, it's concerning, an assessment, and Mr. Thompson may want to chime in here, but through the Kentucky School Boards Association, they offer many services, and one of the services that they offer is concerning insurance. And, uh, we of course have our workers' compensation, our property and liability insurance. We also have an additional five-million-dollar umbrella coverage, uh, through the Kentucky School Boards Association. Now, they have a, a separate entity referred to as the Kentucky School Board's Insurance Trust, or KISBIT, and it's not only, I believe, uh, today, it's around seventy-five school districts within workers' comp, around eighty-six, uh, districts participate within the property liability, uh, insurance. And this past Saturday, s- uh, superintendents were made aware that there may be an assessment or additional fee, and, uh, what they're dealing with is a fifty to sixty-million-dollar shortfall, uh, that they're having to cover. And from what I understand, it's dealing with future medical bills because within the state of Kentucky, um, the medical expenses are covered for life, uh, and the future outlay of those medical payments is why they're asking for assessment. Now, the really sad part is, uh, districts are unaware of how much that assessment is going to be. That's right, we're, we're unaware of that number yet. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Thompson, there?
Not, not really, they, they've not publicized the amount that the schools are going to be assessed, but they did indicate that it would be based upon the number of years that they have been insured by KISBIT and their claim history. So if you've got a lot of claims, you know, we don't have a lot of claims, but some districts that do have a lot of claims that have used the, the money up in the fund, those will have a higher assessment. But it's said it's based upon some comp, really complicated formula, that they've not released what that is. So we're supposed to be, I guess, finding out in the next few weeks as to what that number will be for each district.
Well, isn't it strange that we weren't given some warning? You know, that this was upcoming?
Uh, the, uh, School Boards Association shared with me today that, uh, they realized that this was the worst possible time to inform school districts because, uh, all school districts budgets are shrinking. I was told that they were unaware, uh, until recently, and had no idea of how enormous, uh, that this liability was, that was fifty to sixty million dollars. So, uh, it could be really serious, uh, for some school districts, however, any additional costs that are not budgeted, uh, you know, that, if, for example, our school district, we did not purchase school buses this past year, uh, there were no raises, there, th- those kinds of things, uh, cutting back on maintenance, trying to make sure that the things that are cut, uh, do not impact these guys within the classroom. So we're trying to make sure that we make all those cuts, uh, in the other areas, and of course, um, unlike, uh, some branches of our government, uh, we try to be good stewards of the money. If we don't have it, we try not to spend it or get into debt, so.
Are they the ones that made the decision that were a while before that?
Uh, from what I understand, within the pool, they have had that ability to add an assessment, but this is the first time that there's ever been an assessment. You may be able to.
Well, I think one of the, the issues is they're essentially stop writing insurance. This is the last year they're even going to provide insurance. If, from now on, we have to, you know, bid it out and get it through some other company. So we're at the end of the road, so they can't just keep collecting more premiums in the future years to make up for those losses, so that's why the assessment's coming out now, because everything's ending.
But I'm just saying, who, who, who said we were legal?
Well, that's, that's part of our agreement, of being, of being in there, yeah.
So, something too, though, is we will not have, or we should not have, a problem getting insurance or, uh, our school district getting insurance because there's so many things that will never be on our website that probably aren't publicized unless, uh, Ms. Thompson, hello? They, uh, that, that may be publicized now, and what I mean by that are, are these examples. For example, half of our bus drivers or, or transportation department certified teachers driving. Well, you, not only do you have folks trained that have a CDL license, they're also trained within classroom management, they know the students, they have far more additional training in, in dealing with students, and whether it's classroom management or management on a school bus. And the other things is that we have, uh, whether it's classified employees and their instructional assistants or aides within the classroom, many of ours have bachelor's degrees, or sixty-four hours or beyond within college. And, uh, we even, even for a school system, our workforce is extremely educated, uh, in the classified positions or the non-certified positions. And those kinds of things help to reduce typically the number of accidents, the frequency. Can't say enough in the past for Mr. Johnson, uh, trying to make sure that, uh, we tried to, to monitor our loss controls and, uh, meeting with whether it was, uh, our food service workers or our custodians, making sure that they've had all the training and, because our claims, like Mr. Thompson mentioned, are extremely limited or few, I think most companies would look at public independent schools as a great, a great risk. However, not all school districts are as fortunate as, as we are.
So our transportation was under this too?
Yes.
Do we know what, uh, amount of time we have in this assessment to repay it?
I think they're offering, uh, I was told today that they're going to offer options over periods of years, whether it be possibly up to ten or maybe even up to twenty years to repay this, and, uh, there's a, there may have been bailouts for banks, I don't think, there's no money left to bail out, uh, uh, the School Board's Insurance Trust, I.
Well, is, are there?
This is where it comes from.
Are, are we looking forward to some sort of irregularities in the governance of, of KISBIT?
Uh, we don't.
We just don't know yet.
That's exactly right. The, this was, uh, superintendents were notified within an email Saturday across the Commonwealth, so tried to get that information out.
We've been, how long have we been with KISBIT, it, I mean, it certainly sounds familiar to me, it's, we've, we've agreed to that for a long time, haven't we?
Several years.
And it has been recommended.
So that's, that's one of those, uh, liabilities that's hanging out there that we do not know about. And of course, uh, I believe as of Saturday, just as Mr. Thompson mentioned, they're pretty much out of the insurance business from this point forward, be seeking it individually. And again, we're in much better condition than most, but any additional budgetary hits, it's, this is, again, is one of those items that is not a line item that is, we're going to take a hit on.
So we will be paying this off and also paying premiums to somebody else?
There you go, that's correct, that's correct.
Okay.
Right, that's the reason there's, uh, so much concern across the Commonwealth.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green.
Sorry, sorry.
Any more Ms. Salinas?
That's a, that's a notch, that's a notch.
Okay. Need a motion to go into closed session, have a closed session, Mr. Green? All right, we'll move down to adjournment. Anything that has to be brought for the board, or make a motion to recommend adjournment? Do you have a motion now? Mr. Beater, have a second? This conference? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? So moved, we will be adjourned for tonight. Thank y'all for coming. We'll see you next month.